Ideas that came out of that training. So it looks like we do have everyone here now, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order so we can be respectful of everybody's time. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call of the committee members and just to keep things going, I'll call everybody's name. So Chelsea, I'm here. Kyron.
Kyron comes here.
Frankie.
Frankie, boys are here.
Maggie.
Maggie Buckley here.
Nick.
Nick Meyer present.
And Susan.
Susan Divinigini here.
All right. Nick, I love it that you're different. I think it's a good trait. All right, that'll take us into the school verse and I'll go ahead and read this today. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. All right, now 1.4, audience to address the committee. We don't have any audience particularly here. Rachel, Alex, no, okay. All right, 1.5, agenda modifications. Seeing none, we'll move into 1.6, which are the minutes from both December 8th and December 15th. And I am ready for a motion or any comments on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 8th and 15th.
Thank you Frankie.
I will second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right, so we've got Frankie with the motion. And Kyron. With the second, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Susan? Susan, you're on mute?
Aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are aye.
Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
And myself, aye. Great. All right, section two, financial reports. Jim, why don't you take it away?
All right. Here we go. All right, we have a financial update through December. So we're at the point now where we're going to include presumed PPP forgiveness in the update. I think continuing to not include it becomes more inaccurate than including it. It's high, you know, it's more likely than not and it should occur in time for the end of year audit next year. So inclusive of that, we would be looking at a surplus in 2021 of 608,000. Keeping in mind that that doesn't change the cash from last month, our surplus from last month is actually very similar to this month, but now we can stop deferring the PPP and say we anticipate full forgiveness during 2021. If we get a final calculation and we determine it's less than 100%, we would still anticipate that it's going to be in the high amount, close to 100%. And so we're going to use that as a placeholder until we have information other than that.
Um, I, I think that's great. And with everything I've read and seen for the PPP, I think you're absolutely correct. Um, are we looking at potentially being eligible for the second round of PPP?
No, I'll keep it short. And that, that is it, that is, that is an excellent question. And there's a question. Unless I'm wrong, but my understanding is the second round is targeted that you have to document a significant loss of revenue year over year. And so quickly looked into that and pretty confidently say that no school would qualify under that environment because revenue was held at a steady state. I believe it was at least a 25% decline one quarter to a year later. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. So we did look into that. If we hear otherwise, we'll be reaching out, but our understanding is right now, generally speaking, that no schools.
Okay, yeah, see, I just wasn't sure if they went on the accrual basis or on an actual cash basis. And if any of the deferrals would make us qualified, so. Okay, well, I get it.
We, and we do, we will continue monitoring that. And if we have a determination other than my no, we will definitely address that.
Great, thanks Jim.
Inclusive of that, so we're looking at about 461 in revenue really being driven by that. The other component is the existing CARES Act money that we've been talking about all year. There's some, we can move the timing on that. So kind of if we take that timing out and the PPP out, while they're both real, they both matter. You can see we're right at about budget, about 12,000 over those exceptional items. I shouldn't call them that, but yeah, they're exceptional items. Expenses continue to operate a little bit below, about 49,000 below the budget. Often we talk about expenses, December is a good time because we've made it about halfway. And we start to be more confident in the expense trend. And usually we talk about watching out for increases yet to come. Due to the environment, the distance environment, I would say in this model, we would look at it and say, we see opportunities where expenses have a trend to actually go slightly lower, which is good because we know looking ahead, you know, at the, at the current model, we would say expenses are going to be lower. But it's also a likely event that the model shifts and we pick up some new expenses. So we do have some expense offset. If you see some operational activities, looking to the second half of the year where you think that's going to increase, we have some savings to offset that against. Cash, similar to model about 462,000. And then we just have the note that the PPP was fully utilized during the 24 week period. And we will be proceeding with the forgiveness application. Deferrals, at this time, we're still operating under the same assumption related to deferrals. There are proposals being made by the governor, nothing is official yet. My latest understanding is that the deferral reduction being proposed is for 2122 and not for 2021. But we'll continue to see what kind of improved financial outlook we can get at the end of January as the legislature begins to act on the governor's proposals. Key compliance items that the first important December CARES Act reporting was completed. All funds fully utilized by the school. January is a quarterly reporting month, kind of the standard quarterly reporting that will be done at the end of this month. And then the school accountability report card comes due on February 1st and that is in process. No changes related to enrollment or ADA this year. You can see that the whole harmless or fixed ADA was favorable, given the current environment this year.
Jim, is there any word yet as to whether or not they're going to continue this into next year or what the word, word on the street is?
Yeah, so the current proposal is to cease, is to return to actual enrollment in ADA. But that is, that is proposal at this time. I think one reason that that seems likely is because school districts, governmental school districts do, are currently operating on the option of current or prior due to that, their loss of enrollment to charters. And so if they return to actual ADA next year, it was presumed that school districts would still have the option to go back to a fixed rate for one more year. And so we're currently anticipating 2122 being a, a actual enrollment, actual ADA funding year.
Thank you.
I do, I do want to stress, everything though is still just in proposal phase.
Absolutely.
So you can see the revenues as discussed, generally on budget as we, we talked about, and then the boost for recognizing the PPP. The learning loss, the 153 was fully utilized in the current expenditures. There's the 23 through June, generally that could also be accounted for in that, that use through this report. And then the 80,000 I took out of this forecast. So that's actually in addition to the forecast you're looking at. So if, if you do choose to roll that money into 2122 to help boost 2122, we would take it out of the forecast and put it in unearned. So I tentatively did that now. So that we still have a strong forecast plus that 80,000 can be added to next year's budget. Expenses, net favorability, movement in categories. You know, additions for learning loss, some shifting of whether something is staffed or consulting. But overall net favorability, and like I said, at present, the trend is actually favorable the rest of the year. Although we probably anticipate some upcoming costs if there's changes in the delivery of the program. Surplus inclusive of PPP, 608,000 plus the 80,000 not counted in that. Bring the fund balance over 1.1 million, 32%, to be excellent. Cash, continuing the same message. This is a somewhat conservative cash review, but I, I want to stay that way until we have more information coming out of the January proposals. So you can see right now in December, we're trending towards the budget. We were slightly ahead of the budget. But then in January, we're trending below the budget where we had some outstanding AR, which we kind of pushed and said, okay, I'm presuming that money will arrive in January. We're getting a little more skeptical as time goes on and the checks haven't arrived. So there is opportunity here where some state funding may arrive earlier than presented. But we don't want to put that in the model and be caught off guard. So if the state is slow in some of its non-LCF funding like SB 740, you could see where cash gets perilously low at the end of May. And there would be a call to do some sort of short-term borrow. That said, there is opportunity where AR may be received before that time. And this school could continue to operate without any borrowing. So the budget was working on a collections model where the school could be at 288 at the end of June and might not need to borrow anything, just carefully manage their cash. If those collections don't come in, it's too low at, you know, in the $46,000 range isn't adequate to cover a monthly outflow the next month. But continuing to monitor, no actions have, have to be taken in January. And so really we're looking at a March, April, when we meet in March. Hopefully having a check in hand and then we don't have as much deferred AR outstanding at the end of June and we have a better idea. But I think that's really where the board will get comfortable if they're pursuing short-term borrowing or not.
So Jim, just for some clarification, your 15% cash reserve line, is that our target baseline? Like, should we, in the future, you know, as we continue to grow our reserve, kind of be looking more at a flux closer to that line?
Yeah, that's a good goal. Keeping in mind that this model is a deferral year, right? But that said, if, if you look to other facility options in the future, financiers will look to that line. In addition, you know, obviously they'll, they'll look at single year operating surplus and fund balance. Although after this year, we're projecting to have built a significant fund balance for the organization. So that will help, you know, going out to the future, the cumulative should be solid. And then single year, you have more leeway if your single year cuts it close because you have that historic 30%. The one that's most challenging for charter schools is maintaining cash of that 15%. And that really becomes critical to financing, facility financing. Not alarmed this year in the deferral environment. But you could see where, how many changes would have to be made to get closer to that. Generally, it's, it's an end year reporting requirement. So you can have these dips in December, wherever they may occur. And you can see where if we had better collection timing, the budget was halfway there. But that's how far we have to go. So we, we have basically collection timing could get us halfway there. And then really it takes accumulated savings to provide that cushion. So where you have the outflows in excess of inflows during, you know, certain quarters, you have the historic balance to carry you there. So if I, well, I think we talked about, we were over a million in fund balance at June 30th. But we're only talking about, you know, almost net zero cash. Some of that's fixed assets, but it gives you an idea of the magnitude of AR outstanding in that model at June.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you so much, Jim. Does anybody have any questions on that or does that make sense? Okay. All right, thanks, Jim.
Then reporting CARES Act is complete, the mental health budget is complete. Federal cash management will be completed by the end of the month and then the school accountability report card on February 1st. And then often February, we have some standard annual reporting that will be handled by Charter Impact. Jump. Balance sheet, there we go. So you could see at the balance sheet, yeah. Not that much in fixed assets. So the impact of outstanding, outstanding AR relative to cash. Are there any questions about the December update?
I don't have any and I don't see any from anyone else. Let's. Let me pull up my. Power my agenda. Okay. Um. Alex, can you put the warrants up and then, and then the point of sale transactions? I'm trying to. It didn't print those out. Yeah, give me one second here. Thank you. And then we can just take a look at those and make a motion on all of the financial reports if that works for committee. Is this something that was in Jim's report or?
There you go.
Did I miss it?
Right here, right, no, there you go, right there. That's the list of checks right after that, yeah.
Check register, here we go. Thank you. Did anybody have questions on the check register? Nope. Okay. Um. This is the one that had a question. I don't know how big or small it is on your screen. Let me know if it needs to be larger. I think we're good, Alex, since everybody received it in the packet. And then I didn't see the point of sale transactions, was there?
That's my fault. I got confused this month. I don't know why. But I just assumed that they were included in the, this, what we're looking at right here on the screen.
Oh.
And I realized probably about 20 minutes ago that they're not. Address that today when we got to this point. So my apologies, I promised to include this month's and next month's in the next meeting.
Maggie, it does look like there's several that are listed as ACH. Jim, can you clarify if there's, if that's all of the transactions or Maggie, what you're saying is that's not for sure.
I think what you like to see and the finance committee likes to see, Chelsea, are our point of sale transactions, which are transactions where I would use the school credit card or we would make payments with the credit card or we would purchase something in an emergency with the credit card for one reason or another. And so that, and then I usually print out the bank account. Once Jim came along and started presenting these wonderful, much more professional looking version of that, I sort of let that fall off the map for me. So I can provide those. Like I have been.
Are there, Maggie, just, and.
All of it.
Just for, so this, you said this is all of the, I mean, I'm not worried about having it in a separate format as long as I think the big thing is ensuring that we are in fact seeing all of those transactions, just so that if there are any questions or any issues that the finance committee is seeing all of the, the payments made by the school. So is that pretty much everything, Jim?
Yeah, I'll jump in. At, yeah, like, like you said, Maggie, it, it won't include the, the direct point of sale by the school staff.
Okay.
If you want from a, from a bank statement, if you want to copy the bank statement, it's
Yeah.
for me to include that. But record of the point of sale transactions. My accounting input view of that isn't as nicely presentable. I would definitely, I would definitely recommend Maggie's view of that compared to the accounting ledger view is less user-friendly.
All right, well then let's just make note of that, Maggie, that we'll boot that back up at the next meeting. Just any, any transactions that are the direct point of sale transactions that are outside of what's covered in Jim's report. Okay, great, thank you. Oh, that is great. Okay, well then, um, does anybody have any questions on the reports presented? All right, well then we can move on these all together. If somebody would like to make a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend these reports be reviewed by the board. And approved by the board.
Excellent, thanks Frankie. I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Maggie? Great, thank you Maggie. So we have Frankie, Maggie. Last chance for discussion. All right, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Excellent. And that brings us to item three, business, Susan.
Yeah, so the first item is to review the donations and ask for you to approve the recommendation to the board that we accept the donations. So this is from our Christmas concert, which was lovely and fun if you didn't get a chance to attend. And we made about $1,200, a little over 1,200, I think, in the period of time we're attributing to that. And this was our largest donation out of that, so.
That is great. Great, does anybody have any questions? If not, I would love to entertain a motion to recommend the board accepts these donations.
I'll make a motion to recommend the board accepts these donations.
I will second.
Thank you Frankie and Kyron.
I'm second Frankie's motion to accept the donations.
Got it, thank you. All right, then I will go ahead. If there's no questions, we'll call for the vote. Chelsea, aye. Kyron?
Kyron comes aye.
Frankie?
Frankie, boys are aye.
Susan?
Susan Divinigini, aye.
Nick?
Nick Meyer, aye.
Maggie?
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Excellent, all right, Susan, that takes us to the executive director's report.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to skip the first item because I, I want to spend some more time on it. I just talked about, and that's 1,200, not 12,000, so I need to fix that. We made about 1,200 on our online concert, so we were pleased with that. We're meeting with, we've reached out to MC2 with the, the marketing firm with agreement of the board. And so we'll be meeting with them. And this is a, a simple meeting to just ask us some questions and relating to helping them shape our messaging. So that's moving forward. I met with and received information back now with the head of state preschools for Glenn County and talked about some options that we might have both to support full day and preschool. It's not a, it is a direction that the governor and the new president is going as far as preschool for all, but we're not there yet. But my idea is just to move forward with what is available and see what we can do. So we're more ready for that as well. So you'll hear more about that next week as I get more information. And then we are continuing to meet with John Roth, who is our, our broker now. And we met with, had two board members and myself met with the real estate team out of Sacramento and looked at potential properties. So with that is moving forward. So we're excited about all that. It's, it's, you know, exciting to think this is, these are things we've talked about for years that they may actually be coming true. So I'm going to go back to the COVID funding. There is in the governor's proposals additional funding available. I sent out a couple of blurbs to all of you yesterday. I received another blurb today. Because I'm getting, it, it's good funding, starting at $400 per student, which is a nice chunk. And then potentially more than that based on our concentration supplemental and supplemental funds. I don't believe we get concentration. So it could be more than that per student. But I'm also getting, getting some reserve from charter people and from Mary Sakuma that possibly, that this money isn't worth applying for. So so right now I'm going forward with looking at the application or the what we, the requirements that we have to do and considering it. And so I just wanted to kind of put this forward. And I shared some information with Jim today. I don't know if he had a chance to look at it or if he's looked at this funding and, and hope that he can maybe give us some, some thoughts from his perspective on it.
Susan, is this the Prop 98 money? Do you know?
No, I don't believe it is. I believe it's just additional funding for schools for COVID response.
So I, I think it might, it might be one in the, like, that, that additional funding, they're looking at funding from Prop 98. This is one of the things that we discussed in our meeting last night. And and one of the things in its current state, just for the, the sake of the finance committee and the reason like Susan spoke to that it might not be worth applying for is because as it stands right now, and it's not, like, there's still a lot of pushback, so this could change. But apparently as it stands right now, the acceptance of these funds includes several requirements for rigorous COVID testing of the students. And that, and the requirement of all that testing requires the school to pay for all the testing expenses. So at this point, the expectation of a lot of the, the people who look at this and, and have been discussing this is that it may actually be more expensive to fulfill the requirements that are being placed on the money. than the amount of money they're actually giving you. But the good news, and hopefully it helps is that it sounds like there's a lot of pushback and lobbying going for that, for the testing to be paid from like other health fund banks versus that money. So hopefully that changes. But that's a little bit that I learned last night. Jim, maybe you have some more insight into that.
No, that, that was excellent. Similar to that, yeah, our approach right now is, as, as you mentioned, after the announcement was made, large districts started pushing back at the idea of, I, I know it was initially, well, I guess, I guess a lot of depending on the regions of the state, a lot of opening related to K through two. And this plan was setting a timeline to go K through two, and then in March to go K through six in March. And so it was escalating. And we've been more standing back feeling like it's still initial. And if, if a school was moving forward with that anyways, then we'd be looking at it. But I think you perfectly identified the risk right, right now, which is the testing requirement. And the idea that, yeah, is the 450 going to be completely eliminated or, or less than the new, the new testing requirement? So an initial positive that there was an announcement of potential funds, but concern and kind of a wait and see on it. And, and the current as being discussed is there's a February 1st application, but then there's also a March 1st application. So it's not a take it or leave it at this time. And given that the largest districts seem to be objecting, it feels like the final might be different than what we're seeing today.
We can sure hope so.
So my thought going forward and just wanting to get a sense of agreement, not needing to vote on it. I will go ahead and begin working on the package that I have for the funding. So that if we decide we do want to apply for it, we're ready for that. But I don't think as far as having anything ready for you or for the board for next week, that that's something we'll be in any way ready to do. I think you know, this is the government's proposal, the governor's proposal, and then it goes to the legislature is my understanding. And you know, they haven't even responded to it yet. So so there's a lot more to do. So, so what I I do have is that there will be a COVID plan required. We have a COVID plan. So working through our current COVID plan and fitting it into the template that Doc Tracking has provided us as work that I can do. There may be a possibility that I will ask for a a joint meeting of the finance committee and the board, a special meeting so that we could go through the process of reviewing it and getting it done. Because if they do step stick with any kind of early February due dates, there's not time to go through the regular meeting process.
I think that sounds like a great plan, Susan. Thank you.
And that's my report for today.
Does anybody have any questions on the information? That sounds like a no. Okay. Well, great. I don't either. So thank you all for being here. Looks like our next regularly scheduled meeting, barring a special joint meeting being needed will be February 9th at 4:15. Excellent. Thank you all for coming and have a great week.
Thanks.